This meeting is being recorded.
The City of Rockaway Beach City Council Workshop on Wednesday, September 10th, 2025 at 4:30 will come to order. Let's record who's in attendance. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councilor Conneriff.
Yes.
Councilor Martine.
Yes.
Councilor McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilor Ryan.
Present.
And Mayor McNeely is present. Workshops are intended to allow for preliminary discussions by the city council and staff. Workshops are held to present information to the council so that the council is prepared for upcoming regular meetings. Workshops are subject to Oregon's Public Meeting Law and must be noticed accordingly. No final city council decisions are made during workshops. The public is encouraged to attend workshops but may not participate unless expressly asked. So with that, we will begin with Nan Delin from Tillamook Coast Visitors Association for a Tourism Report presentation.
All right. Thank you. Oh, let's see here. Well, there it is. Give it into off. There. One and two. Okay, yeah, we can start that. That's fine. The first was just a final page. So, and of course I brought my glasses that are for reading instead of screen, so I'll be looking down. But I'm talking to you here. So we've had lots of activity this last fiscal year, 25, 24, 25. And we have some new partners that worked on some really fascinating projects with this, including Beeline mobile billboards, and I've got a picture of it later in here, but it's, they're these, they are big delivery carts on bikes and they go all around the city. And the, they have so many hours of visibility during business hours in Portland. I've got the numbers which I will send to you later, but it's hugely the visual. And people would, I was getting reports that people were saying, hey, I used to live in Rockaway. I love Rockaway. Or, you know, things like, I love being there, things like that. So. We also did some work with Northwest Travel &amp; Life. We did a e-blast and special banners. We did a campaign with KPTV this year. David's share, of course, came to Rockaway Beach, which is where we work with them pretty closely. The placement of QR codes had a huge impact on the number of people in Rockaway who went to the website. It like quadrupled the very first month that people were here and went direct to the website. We did the Fire Department Safety Project, which I think they're out delivering now with the tags of things. That was kind of fun. And we also did a KTIL Extended Radio Range stations. We have to use the TLT with that outside 50 miles outside. And they have contracts with radio stations very north and very south. So we went all the way to Florence, up to Astoria, and so as people are driving along, listen to radio, they would hear about Rockaway Beach. And then we also did a lot of work with the Try and True Partners in some of our projects, Portland Monthly and Seattle Met, which is, those two publications are SAGA City Media, and they've been great to work with them. We have, they have told us every time that our numbers for click-throughs or views has outreach as everybody else. And I think it's some of the photography that we use. Well, Lam and Living, Sea Legs Media and Videos, and they did the one on accessibility. And we have somebody else coming in to do the interviews with the business owners, like short reels, talking about their business. We did an ad in 1859 Magazine. We did a campaign, winter campaign with a Llam of Week. We advertised with beachconnection.net and they write stories about us and they have a million viewers, or a million followers, beachconnection.net does. Oregon Coast Today, we did this summer and they did two articles for us. Of course, e-newsletters, Facebook, Instagram. Greg Kazawa Photography, he was here last weekend, the weekend before, and got a lot of photos, beautiful sunset photos of buildings and our businesses. Oh, they're gorgeous. And he'll be here this weekend for, and he was taking more pictures for the city website, New City Website, and the, and also the Kite Festival. And Trux's Beach Wheelchairs, of course, we do quite a bit of work with them as well. So, well, before we move on, I was one of the volunteers that did the fire department packet drops. And I did not know you were involved, and, and thank you so much. I went to probably 200 homes. And I would say that easily, a third of them, as soon as I showed them what I had, they said, oh, I'd been waiting for this. It was so exciting to know that, and I'd say, how did you hear about it? And they'd say, oh, Facebook, or, you know, whatever. So, yeah. Good. Yeah, I wrote the brochure and we designed some of the stuff for them. And it was really great to work with the chief and the captain on that. It was really fun. Well, thank you. Let me see here. Whoop, whoop, that one. Okay. So here's some numbers for you. So on Facebook, Instagram, and the e-news stats. So Facebook, total views, 714,558. And views is how many times a post show up, people's feeds. The total reach is how many people actually stop and look at it. And that's 568,941. Eighty-two percent of them stopped and looked at it. And total engagement was almost 35,000. People made comments or liked or something. Those are pretty high numbers. Total followers are up at 12,461. And we didn't do any campaigns to get new followers on Facebook, but organically we gained almost five, none of 500 followers. Instagram, 200, 2,104 followers, and their organic gain is 227 in one year. The e-news has 10,210 subscribers, and the average open rate is 18.5%. That's 30% higher than the average industry open rate. So people are liking that. Visit rockawaybeach.org. Total people to the website was 90,977. Total new users. There, it's always amazing to me how many new users come on. 90,363 total sessions, 108, almost 109,000. And over 23, 24, there was a 30% increase in people coming to the website. The direct QR code impact was 30,521. And that was a 200% increase of the previous year. So those QR codes are really doing well. And also on the website, the 10 most popular pages, restaurants, things to do, outdoor, annual events. Grumpy's Cafe is always in the top five. So it's usually rockhounding, shopping, how to get there. Bonfires are a big one that you get all the time. What about bonfires? So this next page is a little hard to read.
Question then, with QR codes, are those posted throughout the businesses in the city or other places beyond that, or just in town?
Just in town. Yeah. Yeah. This is a little hard to read on, so you might want to look at your.
Did you have a question?
Which you talked about.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, so we probably started the QR phone cards before you joined council. I know we did. Maybe, and, and Charles worked with Nan on that, so maybe Charles could fill you in on what we're doing with them.
Yeah, so I visited all the hotels and businesses. The hotels, all but one of them, put them in their rooms to replace the paper books where they try to keep information about what's in the city. The QR code gives people access. Most of the businesses stuck one on their front door or on their counter at their, at their cash register. And then Nan had some larger ones created, printed, and Public Works posted them around the town on our wayfinding sign, on our trash cans, just places where people might be and stop and use their phone and, and get to our, get to our website. And then we also had business-sized cards with a little blurb on the back about the Rockaway Beach and then a code on the front. And we have, we have a couple of stores in town that are handing them out, and that's on my list for next May. I'm going to work with Nan to get some more printed, and I'm going to hit up all the businesses to have them put them at their cash register to give out to people that they can walk away with it and continue to use it. So.
Well, that's just in time, current information with that too, rather than a book that might be four years.
Well, it, it, it started with the idea of a brochure, but in consultation with Nan, she said, you know, we've got this visitor website, you know, we'll keep it current. What about a QR code? And I said, that, that's brilliant, because you, you end up throwing groceries away or recycling them and reprinting them and so on.
We hire.
Yeah, exactly. That's a little bit of the back.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that was fun to see the, the impact of that too. It's really good. The top 10 Facebook posts, you can look here, but the number one for two months in a row was it's time to visit the old Oregon smokehouse. And it stayed number one, I think this is spring. It was like March and April or April and May, something like that. But they, you know, had 38,684 reach, 53,000 views. But that's, that stayed pretty high. And of course, less than a month away from July 4th, and the fireworks was next. But these are kind of fun. You can actually look them up on the Facebook page by the date, and you can see what, what people are looking at. And a lot of people love sunset pictures. And we also this year hired Trent, just this year, because we tested him out this last fiscal year, but Trent Wilson, who is a policeman in Tillamook. He is a wonderful video arbiter. And his, every time he posts something, it, this goes off the charts. So we'll be seeing a lot more of that this, this fiscal year. Well, let's see. There we go. Okay, so there's those beeline built, mobile billboards. So between September 24 and June 25, they had 759 hours on the streets. So that was an average of 70.9 hours per month or 19 hours per week. And they're so visible and they park, you know, while they go in and deliver packages. As I said before, the drivers reported out multiple shout-outs. And one man was shouting, I love Rock, the way I grew up there. And it gets a lot, it's, it's very, very, you know, it really stands out.
So these guys deliver packages that they have like rolling built. Okay, when I first was looking at this, I was like, so they just like drive around the city? And I was like, where's that job? Like, they just ride a bike all over? Okay, they deliver packages. That makes way worse, way more sense.
And our organization is doing, going to do the beelines this year too. And so we'll have a double whammy of Tillamook Coast and Rockaway Beach on the streets.
You're welcome to use a QR code on the Tillamook Coast.
I hope you mentioned that.
Just saying. Good sharing, Mary.
Northwest Travel &amp; Life, we did an email blast. And they had a really high 45.49, 49% open rate. That's beyond imagination. It's crazy. An email blast, also almost a 49% open rate. And on social engagement, they had 23,910 impressions and 324 click-throughs. So that was just one post. That's really pretty good. On Fox 12, so I've been doing different TV stations every year. Last, right now, we're doing a KATU campaign. We just started that. And we've done KATU before, and we've done KGW. And maybe next year we'll do KYN or something. But, so Fox 12 had 139 TV spots and it reached 834,678 viewers. And then they had a, we did a, a short clip of a, of a video that we had on hand for Rockaway. 700,740 impressions and a household reach of 356,000 plus done it. So. Wait, it was.
With the KPTV, they do love that.
Yeah, and KPTV has the highest rated morning shows of any of our.
I've been watching them for years.
Two news stations, yeah.
The weatherman Andy Carson is good friends with Don Bess, who recently moved away.
Oh.
But, but he still does stuff for Grant McGolli or whatever his name is.
Rockaway. Oh, wow.
Yeah. Don Bess is a convention all the time.
Well, one good thing about Fox, and why, probably is why they have such a strong viewership is because they don't have high turnover.
Yeah.
Or just, they have this, they've had the same people there for years. Boy, I, I don't, I don't get Fox on, on my streaming. I just have KYN and I go, who's, every day I look at the news and I go, who's that? Somebody new. Who, who's that? You know, it's like.
That's funny that you said that, because I was just on KPTV watching something. And I was like, oh my gosh, she's been on this forever.
Yeah.
I was just thinking.
They're very responsive too.
But they come out and do stuff for the fire department. I've been interviewed by them lots of times. They're water, questions and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, and next is Portland Monthly. And they, we've done quite a bit of things, a few things with them. We get, we do sponsored content in the e-blast, and one of them we did was the outdoors. They created that. And there's a, they have a wonderful writer that I work with. And she just captures this fun tone in the articles. So we had quite a big clip. The 24.2% click-through rate on sponsored content e-blast. March was even bigger. And as the fellow I work with, Chris Healy, said, the food story had been the highest engagements he's ever seen. So people, that's been really very good. I, I really like working with them. They're very, very professional. And they also do Seattle Met. And we get a little less response from Seattle Met, but that's okay.
It's further away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's okay. Still pretty good. So we did, lots of earned media. This earned media is the, is media you don't pay for. It just comes organically. Sponsored media is the stuff you pay for. So earned media, this is just a few examples. So Go Fast Stay Flow, Stay in the Wiener Dogs Race. That was a big one. Don't Call It A Corn Dog. That was fun too. Oregon Travel, Oregon, our Oregon Travel Reporter's Best Trips. And this is Jamie Hale, who is the outdoor writer and travel writer for the Oregonian, and he wrote about it and got really good stuff. And of course, Oregon Post Today did two articles. The Access All Areas, Rockaway Beach Makes strides in accessibility. And that was with the mayor being interviewed.
Nan, how do you get selected for earned media? Is there things we could be doing? What, you say, how does, how does someone or something get selected for earned media? And are there things that we could be doing to increase that?
We do, we, I do send out press releases about new things to all Oregon media usually. And Vancouver, I'll send it over to the Columbia, whatever that's called, Columbia newspaper. I'll send it up to people, Interverse and things, all along the coast.
Which, for lack of better term, it's filler, maybe. Yeah. So, okay.
Yeah. Well, and then this is, I don't have the clip here, but you probably have already seen it, the interview about accessibility.
Some whack of Google.
That, definitely.
They gave them access, apparently.
Yes. Sure. Let me just say, Sea Legs Media did the production and they were just incredibly wonderful to work with. The, the gentleman who organized it and his photographer just talked or really personable, really easy to work with and. just talked or really personable, really easy to work with and 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 made it very easy for me in in the process, so.
And they're very good editors.
Yes.
Because they will let, I've been on camera with them and I've rambled and they make me look like I'm really articulate. That's always bad. This has been fun. And let's see, all right, uh this uh I'm hearing from all around the county and and actually with people that have worked with them other destinations, they're just amazed at what you are doing in grants. You're doing it right. And sound improvement grants and the three marketing grants, total grant funding awarded two ninety one, seven thirty three. And this doesn't even count the community grants you do. And I would like to do a press release about all the grants you put out this last fiscal year. So if I can get a list of like the community grants and how much, um I will get that out right away. Because I I think it's just you you're setting a model for towns.
Well, well, speaking for myself, we're glad to do it because uh it's giving back to our businesses who help generate all that income. Uh but uh could could you highlight a few of the projects that are already completed?
Yes, we could.
Um in the last two years, um Charles probably work with you on this better than I can, but I I just know this year, the Jiu Jitsu Place is already painted. Um then Deb uh released a joke.
Snack and beer, uh beach baked dog, did amazing.
So maybe. Well, they're in the process.
They had one last year too, and that's when they put in that initial A D O stuff.
Well, that's true. Yeah, they're doing a lot more this year too.
Yeah, they are.
Uh but but I don't know, if you could just highlight a few, maybe some before and after pictures if you could.
Yeah, got those.
That would be cool.
Yeah, got those, that'd be cool. Okay, just some other highlights, David's chair and the old growth Cedar Trail benches. That when uh we, I did a post on the bench and I said something like, you, you've talked, we listened, or you asked, we listened, and we got a huge, huge um in responses from locals who said, thank you for doing this. So that was another great move on your part.
Or is it Bill Hassel Passion Project?
Yes, it is. David's chair is.
No, um the uh.
Yeah. And of course, these three new signs went in this year, um adding to the others that you have. And also, we know about it's the map uh sign that's next to Troxos, it's got some rust on the bottom and they're gonna, Ramsey's going to come and uh fix that. They said something is, they must have forgotten something when they did it, so they're gonna fix that.
I like those signs.
Mm hmm. So upcoming attractions. Uh so I'm working with the mayor and um my gosh, his name just escaped me.
Charles.
If no, no, not.
Not the other person, Charles.
What? Working with.
You and who else?
Well, who's doing the writing? The fellow who does the.
Scott Fisher, you're talking about the, you're talking about the historical walking tour, yeah, Scott Fisher.
We're doing a web based walking tour of historic buildings. And um Scott is going to write the content, but we've got the, if this is a web based um so you can go up to do it, we'll have to figure out, do a QR code or we do just go to this website and you can see all the buildings right there and you can click on which one you want to read about. Um and it's web based and you have good, pretty good website or web inter, you know, interconnection there. And you don't have to download an app to do this, which I thought was a big benefit because you just, you know, they're they're a trusted source, but people are nervous about downloading cups. So um and then we're gonna do okay to you, um three TV interviews and a big digital campaign. And those three TV interviews are three different shows and the mayor's going to be in Portland on October sixth.
Yes.
And do all three of them in the same day. So I've got to get your copy points for that too.
Yes.
Get that right away.
I have assignments to do by the fifteenth of September, I believe, is your.
Oh, I have until Monday. Okay.
It's what K A T U said. Not my deadline, it's theirs.
We sent them videos. They've got everything they need and some reels. I had, we had some drone shots that are really nice, so good at them. Um Portland Monthly, we're doing a fall campaign that's already started on accessibility and food stories, a spring campaign for spring break. Um Seattle Met, a spring campaign for spring bake. Willamette Living, we, that, the fall issue on accessibility, I just sent, I just sent that clip out for people to look at. But we're also going to start with a winter um campaign with Willamette Living and they are based Seattle, um excuse me, Salem, and they have about a seventy thousand dis distribution of these magazines. And and it's all Salem Albany and Carvalis, which are, which are our visitor, part visitors. Um and just this morning, uh this fellow named Mark Dennett, who is a tourism consultant, but he also has a magazine called um American Road Magazine as for people who travel in the off season. And they have a huge subscriber list, like a hundred thousand or more. Anyway, the normal cost to be in this magazine is ten thousand seven hundred and forty five dollars. But he had a last minute dropout. And he called me this morning and says, I'll give it to you for eight hundred ninety nine dollars.
What?
Jeez. I said, okay, we can do that. So that will be, yeah, we made up the ad, I made up the ad this morning, got it sent off, and here's the thing. It's ranked number two as the very best travel magazines. The only one has, is ranked number one is National Geographic Traveler. So Travel and Leisure is number three, Ponti Nass Traveler, four, and Lonely Planet Traveler is fine. So it's number two.
Yes.
Yeah, so what, oh, and they're also um the business owner video reels of uh with videographer John Garcia, who is a policeman in Manzanita. So we're getting the police on our side here.
His uh his videos are amazing. He does such a great job with them.
Uh New Photography for the City and like I said, uh Brad Fazal, the photographer, will be here this weekend again. And uh we just ordered more shopping bags and more logoed spread for you. Um also have, just I'll send these out, I realize I'm on shirt, so you and I are going to share, we have it, so you check these. Is there some ideas for off season and I want to talk.
Before we move on to that, just uh two items, there's a, there's a couple of events coming up uh in September and I don't know if there's an opportunity for for Tillamook Coast to uh to promote them. On the twenty seventh of September, we're having a a push in ceremony for uh our ladder truck.
Oh.
Um and uh so there'll be a uh hey, it it's a community event um that's being put together, starts at eleven AM. And uh it's a big deal for fire departments to push in their new, their ladder trucks, so.
We've never done it, but it's an old tradition.
Yeah. Oh, so so our fire department has never done it. Wow. Well, um we're all pretty pumped about that. And then on the twentieth of September, there's a, there's a citywide um uh garage sale called Beach Bargains. And we've got forty seven residents who signed up for it. Um there there'll be an app that will be uh uh you can get to, you can get to to a to a uh to Google Maps through a QR code and will indicate where all of the uh the residents are. Twenty seven businesses have also signed up to do specials on 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 that day. So I again, I don't know if there's an opportunity to to use, you know, people love garage sales and they hear forty seven and twenty seven businesses, we may bring some people in from out of town.
Mm hmm.
For that.
Absolutely. Is there uh, do you have any kind of a link or some information?
Yeah, I can, I can get that to you.
Great, thanks, because we should get that out right away. Wonder, is that the Go Rockaway?
Go Rockaway, yeah.
Okay. That's great. Okay. Do you have any, any questions on this performing that we've done?
It it, well, just to say, you know, our our tourist economy just doesn't happen. You know, we just don't wake up in the morning and we have a robust tourist economy. Certainly, people come here for the beach, but it does take a lot of care and feeding. And I feel like we get taken care of very well by you, Nan, and and Tillamook Coast visitors especially, so thank you for that.
Uh huh. You had that question for you, Nan. Uh I live across the street from two short term mariners. And it's amazing to me, we get so many people from Idaho and Utah.
Yes.
And I, my question is, what do we do that uh is the motivated to kind of?
Well, we haven't done anything from Idaho for a while because I was working through Oregon Coast today and they were doing something through Boise Weekly. But it just looks like a big ad, like nonstop ad, and um we had articles in it, but it looked to me like a throwaway. So I'm gonna do some research. Uh we do get a lot of Idaho, uh especially, we even get it in spring, Idaho.
Yeah.
Um and Utah is usually just somewhere. But they come here mostly a lot to go up to Kelly's Marina in Utah, because I've talked to him about it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because I, I drive through parking lots to see what license plates are from. And I go through, I go through Kelly's Marina and I go, oh, my God, California, Nevada, Utah, 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 Idaho, Idaho. Yeah, it's a big deal. So I'll look into that because I think it'd be good to watch.
I I think so too. I've walked a boardwalk over two hundred times this year. And uh I encounter a lot of people from Idaho and during spring break, a lot of families came here from Idaho. It's still one of the affordable places to spend spring break compared to other places along the coast.
Yeah.
And so I think attracting people from, more people from Idaho would be a good way to spend money.
I do too. I do too. I just learned this year, uh the Tillamook Coast Lodge and Spa in Pacific City is now more than a thousand dollars a night.
Really? Wow.
Isn't that something? And in a Cape Canaveral across the street is five hundred to seven fifty a night. So yeah, you've got it here. It's horrible for families.
Yeah.
Which you appreciate by trade.
By that. Okay, so some, here's, and I, these are just ideas. And I looked around to what places, what kind of festivals get really good attendance and have a good reputation, or how could you build something from scratch that might be? Right. So I talked about this last time, but the bird, we used to, Pacific City used to have um what was it called? Um Birding and Blues.
Mm hmm.
They spent a lot of money on it, but they only would have ninety participants. It would, to me, it just didn't make sense. They spent a lot of money on it for ninety people to come. Um so I'd like to look at, I'm gonna look at other birding events, but birders spend more time and more money than any other travel group, which is niche group, because they're looking for them.
Yeah, I have friends who live here who will go to Costa Rica for a week just to look for certain birds.
Yeah, absolutely. Um and so the one in Pacific City took place in April. Um and they would um, you know, they'd have buses and, you know, like, like those um shorter buses that the transportation district has, the dial line ones, and they'd get people and they'd take them out to different birding spots all around the county. But the home base was Pacific City and you, this is a good home base uh to have something like that.
So are you saying we join Pacific City or we do it here?
No, they do it here. They stopped.
Okay.
In COVID and didn't do it again. So um that's one thing to think about. So the quilt show, now there used to be this.
Can I go back to the the beach, the bird thing?
Sure.
I have been pestering Public Works, Dan Hag, uh Dan Emerson and and Luke Shepherd for about three years now to make our our um city wastewater treatment, I'm gonna call it a pond, into a bird watching station. And if you want to see how effective that can be, Cannon Beach does that. Now, they have like three ponds instead of one.
Yeah.
They have picnic tables, they have a bird watching thing, they have a gravel path around all of it and it's full of people sitting there eating and and um I get from Public Works, Mary, who's gonna actually sit in front of a sewer pond and watch birds? Well, let me tell you, a lot of people do, including me.
There's hang up in Bellingham too, and it's a beautiful pathways and and it's a bird, bird watching area. It's surrounded by trees.
I can see in the future that this happens, that we have uh bird watching at our sewer pond and also that at some point we have bird watching platforms on Lake Lidl. And there's a couple of places that the city has access uh publicly, I mean, we have, we own land down to the lake and I can see that being a popular thing.
Yeah.
So.
A lot of birds that they fly.
Yeah, there there are. I see them every time I kayak, eagles, everything, yeah.
Oh, all right.
So so that's just something, the, there is a potential for the future for that.
Very, very full. Uh the second one, there, there's been this very, very popular thing called the Quilt Run One O One. And it went from Astoria all the way to Brookings. And it's, people are buying fabric for quilts. It's huge. It used to be huge in Tillamook. But two of the fabric stores closed down, they retired. And the one that's left that's in Tillamook doesn't do it anymore. So this quilt run map was from Cannon Beach all the way to Florence and there's a big gap in there. Like that can Rockaway fill this gap. And it could be a quilt show. It happens in February, mid February. It could be a quilt show. And we have so many quilters in this county. It's a cultural heritage tradition. Um but it could be a place that they could stay before they head on to Florence. So just an idea.
We just had the um, what's the quilter's booth out at Tillamook?
Oh, um, what do you mean, the Latimer?
Yes, they hung up at N C R D. And we had so many people come through, look at their quilts, and some of them, you stand back and I'm like, how did they do that? But I was amazed at how much foot traffic we got for people coming to check out that art, that that quilt show.
Yeah.
And they were beautiful. I think I think they were maybe the month of July, if I remember correctly.
Well, that's, you know, and you could do this anytime, you would, but it's um, but people are in their cars and they're out trying to buy fabric on the highway one O one. Right. So it might be a great, you know, off season. Uh the other one I thought about, and bluegrass concerts are so popular. And we could do bluegrass at the beach. Um the thing is, is where do you, where do you do this? You put up a big tent at the wayside and everybody goes in, listen to music there. Do you have, you know, places like the restaurants might have some bluegrass band come in in the evenings, something like that. It would, but bluegrass is huge. Um and we don't have any bluegrass concerts on the coast at all. None.
We used to have wine, cheese and uh jazz sponsored on the wayside. And that drawn a big crowd.
Did it?
The Chamberlain sponsor.
Yeah, when the, when the N Cam did their music festival in uh in uh August. Uh I was told by many people, many businesses, I did a little survey afterwards to see how it affected the businesses. And many of them said it was their second busiest day after the Fourth of July. And that was before Labor Day, so that may been knocked it down to the third.
Yeah.
But um uh it also took us about a year to put that together, so. So maybe something a little, something that might work is, I go to lots of music things and sometimes towns will house a band in like different restaurants.
Yeah.
And you get an armrest or something, you pay like twenty five dollars or something, you get an armband and you just can go and eat and circulate through town and
Yeah.
and listen to the bands.
You know, Langley on Whitby Island does that and it's the Django Fest. So it's that kind of gypsy jazz, uh and it gets, it gets people from all over the world. to go to it, because it's so unique. The other one I thought about is kind of a takeoff on the Fisher poets that is, that's done in Australia that gets a huge crowd. But that's focused on fishing, commercial fishers. And so all the poets are around about fishing and, you know, I thought, here, could we do a beach beat poets? And have local people come in and do the poetry and get a music to it or anything. There's a lot of people that book sales, local authors. It'd be a fun thing. You have ideas, please send them to me, because I will do some research on them.
I remember at a jazz festival, they make souvenir glasses you buy your wine glass.
Yeah.
For, I forget, to certain amount of money.
Yeah.
And you just take that glass and I get it filled out throughout the evening. Then you save first souvenir. I've had about four of them.
Yeah.
I had somebody ask me about a, uh, wayside camera. I don't know.
Mean for the ocean to look?
Yes.
Yeah, we, that's, those are easier to do. You just have to find somebody who's willing to have a camera on their building. And then we hook it up, we can hook it up to the website.
I tried to set one up at Seaport condos. And the two different people I had trying to, they couldn't get it to work. That was years ago.
We gave the Chamber of Commerce a grant to do that last year, and and they haven't done it yet.
Oh.
So that might be something to check into, see what's the holdup.
But Pacific City has them, Cannon Beach has them.
Yeah.
There's one on Maui that we, at the resort that we stay at, and I check it all the time. I love it.
We gave them a community grant to do that.
Okay, so then, yeah, I suggested workforce and tourism training opportunities. We can do guest service gold. Hospitality training. I'm a certified instructor, and so is Ken Henson, who's actually done more in Oregon than any other trainer on guest service gold, and he's to, we're thinking about doing it as as a team, doing things together. So we can do, act out some scenes that we've all experienced, and how would you respond, and things that's really fun. Um, we could do walking tour guides. I happen to be a certified interpretive guide, so I could train people to do walking tours. It might be in conjunction. Uh, there's a lot of certified interpretive guides in around too, in this county, we train them. And so that could be something that could go along with, uh, historic walking tours stuff. So we just launched, uh, VTC for Visit Tillamook Coast Academy. Um, there are now four online webinars. They're available on YouTube, youtube.com/tillamookcoast, and I'm developing two more. It's Facebook and Instagram for lodging businesses, Facebook and Instagram for food businesses, create your own brand story for food businesses, and marketing planning for tourism businesses. And they all come with handouts and notebooks and stuff. It's really good. But there's also, and I've already talked to them, Co-Starter is a national program. It is, um, it takes you, it's a ten-course thing, or they can do a shorter one for four or five. Takes you from business idea to access to capital. So you come in with, I want to try this business, see if it works, and they take you through every step to see if it could work. Um, it's really good. We've done it three times before, and we could do one just here in Rockaway. And I've already talked to them. It's part of Reinventing Rural. I've already talked to them, and they said be glad to do it. In fact, we already paid for it, because we were supposed to have one in the Halum, but nobody signed up. Um, because if the news got out too late. So we've got, we can be ready to go on that, and it's a great thing to do in January and February. This is.
They've got a lot of new businesses too, that really benefit from that.
Absolutely. And then.
I was gonna say, and our, and our established businesses too, I went from business to business this year with our facade grants to tell the businesses about them. And, um, and I I learned from my conversations with them that a lot of people uh, don't have experience with how to market their business, and so they didn't know how, what to put in the grant even, because they didn't know how to do that. So, um, I I think the last three bullet points would definitely benefit our our businesses.
Yeah, it's, I I learned that when I first started, I walked, I went business to business throughout the county, trying to find a hope to for marketing. Nothing, you know, they just opened their door and really hoped for the best, and then there was grants available. So, yeah.
So Nan, with, with this program, is, are they set up as scenarios? And it would figure out, okay, you want to start a business, and here's the first step.
Yeah.
And it plays through, and is it successful there, and it takes you to the next? Um, it's hypothetical?
Um, it's actually people, yeah, it, it's just a program for, are you talking about Co-Starters?
Yes.
They have you come in with an idea. Do you have an idea for this? And and it's a group setting. Everybody gives feedback to each other. Um, this is really good, very good.
Condensed, not a small business development, long run out.
Yeah, they don't do this one, and I don't know why that they don't.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to include them, because I think they should be part of this.
Um, so now the VTC Academy, how do people access it? How do they learn about it? How do we make it available to our our business community?
You go to us, I can, what I can do is send the links, send the link to um, Melissa maybe, uh, and we can send it out to the businesses and show them about it. I'll I'll write up something and send it to the city, so you can get it out, because it's online and ready to go, it's on YouTube.
Would be great.
And and what about, um, uh, uh, spinning up a guest services gold class? What what do we need to do to have that?
We just have to, all we have to do is schedule it. Um, like I said, January and February might be a good time for all of these, because people, business owners will have time to come in and take part. And that's about um, two and a half, three-hour session.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's, it's fun. It takes you, it's a, it's a Travel Oregon um, ORLA program that comes out of the American uh, Hotel and Lodging Education Institute. I had to go through the letters. And it's, it's a national program, but it's been, um, or just for Oregon businesses.
Any interest in getting that, something like that scheduled for January and February?
I think so.
Definitely.
I've taken the train before, so, yeah, it's, I think.
You did it at NCRD.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And and then this last bullet is something that that, uh, I feel strong about. You know, uh, not that I've run a tourist business, a business that drives on tourism, but I can tell that they, it's a unique animal to have a business in a place like Rockaway Beach. So spinning up a class that would help businesses manage cash flow, manage their business in a way that they can prosper when they have to deal with these big swings and and cash flow would be really good to spin up.
Yeah. I think so too. So, um, just to wrap up, I do have something else to tell you. Um, and I've, I've been with, and Mary knows about it, because she's on my board. Um, I also, next Wednesday, I will no longer be the executive director of Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. Um, there's a reorg going on, and, um, I am going to step aside to do special projects. So I'll be doing, I'll be called Director of Grant Management and Special Projects. And so I'll still be doing the grants, I'll still be doing Rockaway. Um, I'm doing wayfinding and some other things like community planning and things. Um, but that's only, I'm only guaranteed with that through February. You are currently in the last year of a five-year contract with TCVA. So, now whatever you decide to do, um, I'll support you. Um, I'm I'm available for contract work, if you wanted me to do that. Or we can find somebody on TCVA team to take it over, and that'll be up to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing for us.
Oh, I enjoy this. This is so much fun. It it really is. And I I love that there's such great, they're starting to get such good impact. And your goal of getting new businesses into the town is working. So you're doing more for your businesses than any other town in the county. So it's great.
And speaking of that, Little RB Store has reopened.
I saw that. It's a, what is it, Vin, what's the name of it? It's a burger place?
Well, I I drove up today and they, they, they're on their little reader board, online reader board. It says burgers, that's all it says. Um, and, uh, and they had their hours, which are I forget, it was eleven to six and, um, four or five days a week, but we went back to have lunch. And they're actually now closed until the fifteenth of September. So we couldn't, we couldn't try them out again today.
Smash burgers.
Yes, coming to Bay Ocean Food Corp.
Yeah, that's great.
People are very excited. They are very popular.
They are very good.
Yes, I think we, I had a smash burger for lunch today.
Okay. Thank you, Nan.
Yeah. Okay, and please, any questions, you just email me, call me, whatever, Sean, and I'll be going to that's for them, and then we can come back. Maybe I'll, uh, move it, and we'll think about these events, because they're gonna take a while to get going, all that, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nan.
Thank you, Nan.
That's just you.
You too.
Yeah, I was over at the RB Little Store, and I told him, I think City Council meeting, I think they're nearly signed up and get it, we need to fold on top. This reality. Good. Good.
Thank you.
You had a hamburger? Yeah, I wasn't. It's been, I didn't try to just touch it, but it's. Okay, you let them know? No, I'm, you know, of course you take it home, you did. Oh, these are good all the way. Um, all right, so we're gonna move on to item B, Salmonberry Trail Project Discussion.
All right, excellent. So I just want to take a couple of minutes and kind of reiterate what I talked about at the last council meeting in my presentation. And, uh, that is as far as the Salmonberry Trail goes, Rockaway section. Um, you know, without the Ford giving us permission to pursue rails to trails. We're on the same track we've been on for the last three years, which is, uh, a thirty percent design with planning for for a rail with trails for our two miles. Um, the consultants are are ninety percent of the way through that work. They're gonna wrap it up in the next few months. Um, and so we're we're on the same track we've been on for for the last three years. Um, and so for the next steps, um, for the Salmonberry Trail project in Rockaway Beach, it's all about finding funding. Where are we gonna find the funding, get this thing built? Um, and what you have to understand is the funding landscape is vastly different than it was just a year ago. So state funding, federal funding, in the amounts we need to build what we have planned. It's not, it's not really available right now, certainly like it used to be. Um, now, that's not saying, we we're not gonna find something, we're gonna keep looking, but if I had to guess, I would say it's probably gonna be a few years before the the funding situation turns around, the tap gets opened back up. And we're gonna apply to get the final design and then and then construct the the trail. Um, it's not bad news, though, you know, um, the good news for Rockaway Beach is uh, we've got a nice five-year strategic plan. We've got a lot of projects already started. We've got projects that are fun, projects we can afford to do, we have the funding for already. And so there's a lot of projects we can, we can, uh, tackle now and get delivered. Um, and so I'm looking forward to, uh, next, the next workshop, where I can do a Q on a first quarter update for you all on where we are with all of our strategic plan initiatives and various projects that we have, uh, we have going on, because there's a lot. Um, and we're excited to kind of pivot and spend some of this energy from Salmonberry Trail onto some of these other projects. Um, like I said, that are gonna be turned around and delivered relatively quickly. Um, but in addition to that, and that's why I brought, uh, Public Works Director Mertz here, and it's a nice to have a Public Works Director, because she can work on things like this. Um, but she's working on, um, a website, a webpage on our, on our, on our website. Um, targeted at the Salmonberry Trail project specifically. It's gonna take us through where we started, where we are now, and have links to all these documents that that we've been working on. Um, and I think what what some people don't realize is that um, the design work that's happening right now, we hit go contract with the engineering firm. ODOT contracts with the engineering firm. We're not the project manager. ODOT is the project manager. Um, we're kind of like their client, you know, so they're paying the the consultant. Um, and so all of the, all of the documents, most of the documents, except for those we might get in an email. Um, they're all, uh, housed at ODOT. And so as as we're starting to wrap this up, uh, Mary's pulling those out from ODOT, and we're gonna put them on our website for everybody to see in a nice, in a nice way that makes sense. So anybody who's interested in 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 how we got here, uh, what what things, uh, cost, where the trail's gonna be, it's all gonna be online here shortly for everybody to look at, and, uh, um, so I think that's a good thing. It's a good thing.
I I I appreciate that from both of you, because this has been a multi-year project.
Sure.
And it's what happens with most multi-year projects, especially when it moves slowly through those multi-years, is that either people forget what's been done in the past, or new people move in and don't know what's been done in the past. So I think this will help. There's still a lot of energy around in the, in the Tillamook County area for the trail project. It's a lot going on that doesn't necessarily involve directly us getting caught up in it. Yeah, so it's more of a, let's wait and see what happens thing, but it's still, still very much alive.
Well, and, sorry, oh, fine, uh, oh, no, go ahead if you got something.
Oh, I I have, uh, just a slide of what the website, like, landing page of Salmonberry is gonna look like if you were interested in seeing it.
Yeah, I'll just drop my comment in. You know, if if you look at our strategic plan above the Salmonberry Trail, actually, and priority is Lake Lidle.
Yeah.
And and so, um, as much as I love the Salmonberry Trail, I over-the-top love what we want to do in Lake Lidle, so I would welcome us being able to take some of that energy that we've been, rightly so, putting into the, now turned around and starting to focus. I know we've got a path for the out-of-water, um, uh, updates, upgrades. But, uh, and and I know there's a plan out there at the Marine Board for the in-water water, but I really would love to bring the, bring the public in, start moving forward and seeing what it's going to take from a funding and a permit. Just really turn that into a project and start moving forward, because what we plan to do there, I think, will be a real game changer for Rockaway Beach, both for our residents who who love to do things around the water, um, as well as, uh, being a magnet for new groups of tourists to come to town.
And and it'll bring tourists year-round. I probably kayak more on Lake Lidle through the winter, because there are so many days when it's not raining.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Uh, and, yeah. We we have a potential to make our, our, uh, community, to make Rockaway a recreation destination with, um, a a lot of different small things, but people will come and and do all of those small things, and Lake Lidle's one of them.
Yeah.
And the Salmonberry Trail will be one too.
Yeah, and and Lake Lidle is, the the, the audience can't see it, but on the map behind us there, you can just see how how big that is, how big an untapped potential that is in Lake Lidle, and and pressing like there, just absolutely massive.
Yeah.
Absolutely massive.
Well, I mean, I mean, Tom and I obviously live in the area, so we drive, well, and Mary, we drive by it a lot. And it's been very interesting to me over the last couple of years. So I've lived back in Lake Lidle since two thousand and nine. And every summer, it just gets busier and busier and busier. And then when we lost the dock that was there, everything dropped off, I feel like, quite a bit, and then we went through COVID and everything, you know, we were in a weird. But this summer, I was absolutely shocked at how insanely busy Lake Lidle was, seven days a week.
Like, we built it up.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, like, I think it's just gonna, just gonna take it, and when there's like, my kids, I know when we would walk back from the beach, they, you know, when they were little, I have to go potty, and I'm like, well, we can go here, I'm not going there. And so I think by doing the potty upgrade. Kids were terrified of it, but I just think that all of these little upgrades we're gonna do, I mean, I just think that it's, it's it's just gonna take the lake to another level. Because it is such an amazing, I mean, nothing makes me happier than when I go by and I see kids out there fishing off the bridge. You know, and then it's like you come a little lower and then you see the kids that have gone in on the far side and they're swimming. And then you've got the dog that's jumping in over here, you know, I mean, it's just, it is.
Huge.
It's huge and it is so, it is.
I know you want to talk about the Salmonberry Trail, but I did have to just say, I, I kayaked there about a week ago. And, and there were seventeen kayakers and paddlers. Some of them were with me, but not all of them. And so it, it, yeah, this is, we, we have a lot going on and I'm excited.
Me too.
This looks very cool, by the way. Yeah, I really love it.
Um, I wanted to keep it pretty simple. There's a lot that goes on with the Salmonberry Trail. Um, it's been going on, as Council McGinnis said, for a very long time. Um, and how the grants function and the number of agencies that are really involved in this project. Um, I think can be, uh, a little convoluted when you're trying to, to learn about the project. So trying to keep it really clean and straightforward, there will be a lot of links to additional information for whoever is interested. But, um, my goal is that people can look at this and at least understand what has happened and where we're at, uh, in a snapshot. Uh, and that can dive deeper if they are looking for more.
Well, well, one of the things that, uh, oh, cool, one of the things that, uh, I, I, I'm proud about what we did is there is a tremendous amount of community engagement. And if somehow this can highlight how much community engagement Rockaway Beach has gone through
Yeah.
on this project would be a, a really good message to get out there in the community.
That's true.
And I would include the strategic plan and community engagement and it being ranked so highly on our street by the community on our strategic plan.
Yeah, this is exciting. Thank you for making this on. This is great.
Well, I feel like getting the facts out there to the community is very important. There is so much bad misinformation out there. It, well, I, I mean, they just think that every ounce of it is just dead and gone. It's, it's the vibe that I have, I have gotten from the community. So I think getting some fact sheets, getting some information out there so that people understand, you know, what's truly going on with it and we can hopefully simmer down some of the rumors that are going around about the trail right now.
Oh, I wouldn't, I think that it's a worthy goal.
So, so that's what, that's what we're gonna be up to.
Good, good. Um, so I don't want to put, uh, there if you're Merz on the spot, but I'm wondering if you could off the top of your head uh, walk through the community engagement you have planned for the sewer rate study, the, the flyers, the timing, those kinds of things, so everybody on the council's aware of it. I got a preview of it.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, but I think some of the council hasn't heard that, that, and I, and I, I.
Were you gonna cover that later?
Yeah, I will go a little bit in my presentation.
Oh, okay. If you're gonna do it then, that's fine.
Yep.
That's fine. Okay, perfect. That's great. All right. Well, is there any other agenda items for the next one that you want to?
Uh, worth, worth noting, I don't know if, if, if all of you saw your email, I think this morning, uh, I sent out a quick one. Um, so Monday afternoon, I got a text from Under Sheriff Matt Kelly that our fourth, uh, deputy is, uh, uh, ready to start. It'll start next Sunday. And so we will have all four, uh, uh, patrol deputies here in Rockaway Beach. A fully staffed Rockaway Beach Patrol, which was, uh, uh, one of the, uh, important items in our, our strategic plan, which was getting that, uh, getting filled out. And we're gonna be there and, uh, Under Sheriff is going to introduce him tonight at our council meeting. So it's exciting.
I, I after watching their, or reading their monthly report. I, it, it, it just, and I realized this was a summer report, so it will look differently in January. But boy, were they busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So back when we had our own police department, how many patrol officers did we have then?
I don't know exactly, but it was, yeah, it was fluffy.
The chief was never out there. So, so we're actually gonna have more, uh, wheels on the ground with this, uh, arrangement than we had with our own police department.
Yes.
Is that a safe thing to say?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I like to say that. All right, um, well, with that, um, I guess may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Well, could I, could I just, I have one thing on there I want to say too. I, I'd like to bring forward, um, something that has been discussed off and on. And that is, um, the ADA STR. Our Planning Commission put months into it, really put stellar work into it and came up with, uh, a suggested ordinance or guideline. I don't know that it's really an ordinance written as an ordinance, but more of a guideline for us. And I would like to honor the work they did and at least have us get serious about taking a look at it.
Yeah, and that'll be, that'll be something we can talk about next month when we do the STR.
Okay.
That's your chat.
All right, uh, okay, uh, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
It's moved to second then. Let's vote. Counselor President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conover?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We adjourned at uh, five thirty-five on Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five.